Ayoh, you know you fit the rotation from the first time I saw you. Make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the position from the first time I saw you. She want to come by my side, but she tell me say she don't have no shovel. But that coulda caused a little trouble because my shovel, you have to pay a double. Oh, say she can't mix concrete, so she want me be sure I rough it deep. So me tell her if it been my bad, girl, why you show me like that? Yeah. Girl, make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the position from the first time I saw you. Make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the position.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on! Alright then, pull it up, pull it, boom, boom! Welcome, welcome. I go by the name DJ Fusion the ones and twos. I go by the name DJ Fusion the ones and twos. They come, they come in the building. Welcome to Shashaman International Studios tonight. Nothing but love from us, let's go!
Say she wanna work, say she wanna work 'cause she tired of the night to five. So me chip in the overdrive, and me give by the overtime. My love keep her alive, Boni she a fantasize. 'Cause she love off me style and she love off me smile, the way me treat her so nice, oh. Girl, make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the rotation from the first time I saw you. Make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the position from the first time I saw you. She want to come by my side, but she tell me say she don't have no shovel. But that coulda caused a little trouble because my shovel, you have to pay a double. Oh, say she can't mix concrete, so she want me be sure I rough it deep. So me tell her if it been my bad, girl, why you show me like that? Yeah. Girl, make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the rotation from the first time I saw you. Make me see your application, make me imply you. You know you fit the position from the first time I saw you. Baby, we a rock you, like a thumbtack, baby, we attack you. Like a countryman, girl, me a got it, feel like a ball and boy call me, I go score you. Me have a chick that make you wind and you swing eh, anything so make you tag on chat see. Make you say, oh no, just so, so to think eh, quint your eyes is low, crown a roll a watch me. I like it, baby, where you want it, girl, I like it, yeah. When you like you, I like me, I like it. First time she ever get it like that, let me start the first time today, but what did not the stuff? Do it from the front and we get it from the back, chick a wild and a friend, she a touch. She say, play, play with me, baby, and me say, one from me mind.
TikTok, we are back.
Every time you do, we tonight.
TikTok, we are back. Back, back! Karibu Pauline.
Me a care why you come back, I like it that way.
Samuel Kandjai, see you, Wagon, my brother.
TikTok, I'm waiting, all raindrops falling, there's a fire burning. Every minute, every second, I'm thinking bout you, girl, oh. And I know it's a blessing that you are in my world, baby.
Why don't you?
Come over, love to spend some time with you. Why don't you come over?
Bump on Jesus, yo! Pull up, pull up, pull up, let's go, let's go! Select a bills, I see you. Ija Karibu. Masai Pia Karibu. MC Journey Wagon. Pauline Number One Gifter. Let's go! Sijywa Tawadikutokama Skia. Big up Weenie, I see you. Only Diana Wagon. MC Journey Wagon. Blessed Mo. Big up!
TikTok, I'm waiting, all raindrops falling, there's a fire burning. Every minute, every second, I'm thinking bout you, girl, oh. And I know it's a blessing that you are in my world.
Abdulambewo Demia Konini. Why don't you? Clinton Bob, I see you. Thanks for the love, let's go! Sing, sing! Tukapasha Shashaman International Studios. Tutrimasi Wagon. Eric Hood Wagon. Jivad Wagon, Wagon. Asebo Wagon. You guys are not ready for this one. One, two, three, let's go! Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on! Alright then, pull it up, pull it, boom, boom! Masimasi Siku. Papi Milan Wagon. Michael Ajawa. Michael Ajawa, I see you, brother, big up, big up! Princess Julie, Wagon. And the DJ is playing our favorite song. Tonight we have a fire show, let's go! One by one. TikTok fam, I see you.
Girl, I'm gonna make you wet till you can't wait no more. I'm gonna make you feel my loving on the floor. She feel the sweetest pain, she a stay at the club where friend Liam. So she want a real man to come and turn. Yeah, let's ride to the east to the mansion, you been waiting for a long, long. Summer play our favorite song.
Me feel so weird, make me get bad, dark sky, shine and shine.
Whoa, whoa, whoa!
Bleach out, girl, how you feeling? Everybody feel, everybody feel, like Santa, to the pitch feel. Like a lullaby, to the world go up, and water food to come, man.
Bump on Jesus, yo! Pull up, pull up, pull up, let's go, let's go! Big up Rootman. Rootman, I'm a smart transition from the top. Kadere 254 Wagon. I am Betty Wagon. Mzevostee. Kadere 254 Wagon, welcome to the party. Martin Wagon. Don't forget to follow me at Fusion the Entertainer. Make sure to follow me Fusion the Entertainer. Let's go, let's go! Thank you for the roses babes. Prince, I see you. Thank you for the roses, TikTok massive, I see you, Wagon. Martin Motisia Wagon, let me see you. One Max Moas. GP 254, I see you, my brother. MC Chuitoto, let's go! Welcome to the party, go!
Love a new balance like an acrobat, drop it like a earthquake, jiggle like the aftershock. Option reset, we don't talk a lot, no bag a chat, serious like a heart attack.
Bend down like jelly in a disorder, and no more gets set, you know what come after that? The place wet up, water no water, you know this empty cat, you know heart attack. Why you feel?
Sit down, sit down, Pam body, girl, you feel, sit down, sit down, Pam body, grab a chair and sit down.
Watch this.
Sit down, Pam body, girl, you feel, sit down, sit down, Pam body.
Squeeze me, throw down, sit down, sit down, Pam body, suck out me nipple and sit down, Pam body. Chatty, chatty, lippy, lippy, don't laugh, not no funny, make up your face. Till you ugly like mommy, sit down, Pam body.
Stop it, sit down and behave, look how you big, I saw me know me great.
Somebody ask for some Booboo Banton. Old school mashup, let's go! Pauline, me chase a vibes, Katya. Amani kuchaze ngine.
Ganja fi, ganja fi, ganja fi bone and money fi, money fi, money fi roll and poverty, poverty, hita fi dollar. Tell the soldier man, them do not consider, ten thousand pound, every dude a king stone and me ship it, me ship it, go Bell German. When money, when money, when money come, so me know the shakas are good up next door. People are suffer cause nothing I want, don't in a Jamaican, no freak me a ball. Tell the government, them be cool and keep calm, we know they can't jump, we know they can't jump. Just a day a street, they run the place far, go on, who they?
Chuan, love him.
Sing, sing, say! Don't forget, today we are playing Anything Dancehall. Anything Dancehall, guys. Keep the requests coming. Old school muffin, raga muffin. New dancehall. Say, say! Anita, I see you, big up! Thanks for the love. Belta, see you. Chaka Demasina kujapia moja. Listen to this one, let's go one time. Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on! Alright then, pull it up, pull it, boom, boom! Let's do it then, let's go, one time, let's go!
I show me who they stand up source.
You ask for Chaka Demas? There goes Chaka Demas. Sing, sing, say! One time, go! Dan K Town, is a Uli saao eh? Genzisai wanna float. Walawa Jam Session. Kangaroo, kangaroo, kangaroo eh! One time, say! Back when Jam Session used to be a thing. Wacha na na dorime. Kuda is a siku. Sawa ina kam, Dan K Town. Thanks for the love, big up! Honrabu Martin, go! Nakaya Wagon, let's go! Cornelius, thank you for the love, I see you, brother. Weekend is a cabbage, guys. Zaccavage! Wagon Consellias, big up!
Hold checka, follow me!
Kimo, Rastafari, Goda Tena, Goda, Goda! We're done eh, buu, niambeka unakumbuka eh? Wagon Bad Boy, I see you, brother. Pauline Wagon, thanks for the love. True Boy Kenya Wagon. Dan K Town, unakumbuki. Kuniwani Genzis. Bad Boy, let's go! Pablo Moser, I see you, brother. Salute to you, my G. Shay Cole, welcome to the party. Christine Wagon. Mpentakuela, you welcome to the party. The party just got started. Welcome to Shashaman International Studios. Laziba ibambe. Walawa Goda Tena. Weka Goda. Goda Tena, say! Shashamaneni Noma, Si Noma. Don't forget, I go by the name DJ Fusion the ones and twos, Ukipenda Fusion the Entertainer. Let's go one time, let's go, let's go! Meru massive, I see you, brothers. Bogia Meru. Abdul Malik Wagone, welcome to the party. Night and day, let's go! Guys, this is a very, is a big tune man. If you know, you know. Let me see your fire emojis up, fire emojis up. One, two, three. Yo guys on TikTok. The next song, I want you guys to tell me if you know the song eh? Machali, when you go TikTok. If you're a bad man, let me see your fire emojis up. I want you guys to listen to the second song eh? Mister Producer, you go ready for the second song? Mister Producer, are you ready for the second song? Alice Shiru, thanks for the love. Alice Shiru, thanks for the love. Alice Shiru, thanks for the love mazee. I made a shout out to you, thanks for the love man. Brand, Brand, welcome to the party. I go by the name DJ Fusion, the ones and twos. Shakya. Chaliso, thanks for the love, thanks, thanks for the love, let's go! David Jooms. Explosive man, usili buke ya patafadal. Welcome Eve to the party. Chaliso, thanks for the love man. MC Osayu, hello! Tap, 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 share the life. Share the life, share the life. Tuko on by eh. Nabado ni mapema. I'm not done with you guys. I go by the name Fusion, the entertainer. Theka theka in the building. Flavien Wagone. Welcome to the party, Anonymous. Sean, I see you. Columdeka. Ibrahim Tours and Travel, welcome to the party. Ibrahim, no kuja tu bebe. King of London. Meg Wagone. We at seventeen K, let's take it to twenty K guys. Share the life, share the life. Let's get it to twenty K, let's go! Mze, mze Vosti, I see you brother. David Muwe, No Marie, No Masana. Rirolia coming up eh? There's no way I can play dancehall and not play some Kenyan dancehall. One from the OG himself. From the OG himself. Man like Red Sun. There's no way I can play dancehall and because I could cha Red Sun. At any one point, let's go! Mojia na nizizi na kuja mze Vosti. Shika Glassi, weka barafu. Guys, let's take it to twenty K guys, twenty K, let's go! Road to Toad, that twenty thousand, let's go! Up and kicking, let's go! Fidi Fidi, karibu kwa shere eh? Monday Blues, diyo yo. Natoa hangiye eh? Welcome to the party. I go by the name DJ Fusion, the ones and twos. Keep score. Why? Daniel Ruto. I think you should change your, your, your last name. Amani Kasongo. Davi Jarogi, I see you. Tony M Kush. Karo Frederick. David Muwe, No Marie. There's no way ni tacheza dancehall na ni koseku di guzaa Red Sun. FK, I see you, big up! Makori joined Wagone. Masani, I big up. Pauline, I see you, thanks for the love. Mze. Chaliso, I see you, big up brother. Dan mze. Konuwe lala. Nice, nice. Wagone. Makas, I see you, joined right now. Welcome to the party. Dan Ome Doz. Katia Pauline.
The RE diesel, ya man, ya don't know, bad mind, active and correct. Ya don't know, bad mind, we never run a beat. Ya man check it out right now, don't know, that's the sound, correct.
Dan Shika Glassi, Shika Glassi la funini? Guys, as a guys, guys. Check on, on the next song eh? Kenyan dancehall, let's go! Who said that, say! Abbas Bilas Wagone. Bilali, I see you. Bonface, welcome to the party. Francis, see you. Mister Dream. KQ Baba Wagone. Mamila, I see you. Jogudon, I see you. Levi Wagone. Izo, I see you, it's fire eh? Evo, Evo, let's go! One time, let's go! Omwanda, I see you, weka lom. Welcome to the party. Welcome, welcome. Charles Mogondi, I see you. Kijana Keus. You guys are funny name eh? Isima Gina Joe. Let's go, let's go! Aldo Medojo, let's go! One time, say! Millie Forty One Hundred. Route Twenty K, let's go! One time, say! Silbo Mia, welcome to the party. Liz Karibu kwa shere. Millie Hey. Mousson. Mukuala Mukwati. MC Full Dose. Wankapona unakumbuka eh. If you remember this one? With all these girls. Chopa, sing, sing! Monetisha Shonpol Moja. One short pole coming up right away. Close make to see. She know me not gonna stand up and pose make to see. Car who is wet, 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 wet. Girl from London and Birmingham. Say them warm up, say them up, fat them up, give them a hurry. One girl from USA, Japan and Switzerland. Girl asks me how me stick so long. Representing. Clip my finger, girl on the roll with me, yeah. Say them wanna stroll with me, girl from all over the world in all the West Indies, yeah. Say them fall in love with me, yeah. Clip my finger, girl on the roll with me, yeah. Say them wanna stroll with me, girl from all over the world in all the West Indies, yeah. So me go so then. But I don't really care what people say. Them want do. Still I got to stick to my girls like glue. All I know this time it's getting jay. Needle on the trees up in my head. Had a lot of nesl in my bed to run and react. Well enough, sicka girl, they body roll, they got their goodie, goodie. Watching me, I feel them not to got their woody, woody. Front way, back way, put the key man up and shove it, shove it. Virgin, them want give me, and me up and toky, toky. Hot girls out the road, I said them see me, see me. And I tell me, say them have something for give me, give me. Much a man like them all are dream bout the Jimmy, Jimmy. Em a promise, and I tell me, say I feel me, feel me. But I promise, is I compare to a fool, so cool. Only done know, say that man up here rule this school. When I pet them, just wet them up, just like a pool. Only they get the river, I feel use of me tool. But I don't really care what people say. I don't really watch what them want do. Still I got to stick to my girls like glue. And I'm a play number two. All I know this time it's getting jay. Needle on the trees up in my head. So how can they come pick up their chest? They don't know that they come when they're raising up the best. I wouldn't let it, let it sound a badness. I get up in a kayak, kayak, kayak. Shake that thing, baby. Can I, can I shake that thing, baby? And I better shake that thing, yah. Dada, dada. Jody and Rebecca, woman, yeah, baby. So share that mood, it non stop. When the beat drop, just keep swinging it, get jiggy. Get crunked up, percolate, anything you want, we call it oscillity. I don't take pity. I want to see you get live when the rhythm on my ride. I'm a lyric, I'm a body like electricity. All the girls do you nothing, 'cause you don't know your destiny. Yo, sexy ladies, wanna party with us? In all the car with us, them not war with us. In all the club, them wanna flex with us. They get next to us, them can't vex with us. From the day my bond try ignite my flame. Girl, I call my name, and it is my fame. It's all good, girl, turn me on, till I hear them on. Let's get it on, let's get it on, till I hear them on, girl. It's all good, just turn me on. Girl, close ready. Don't get agitated, girl, go rotate. 'Cause anything you want, you know you must get it. From the name I mention, don't ease attention. Girl, want the program, just go with it. Yo, have a good time, girl, free your full of mind. 'Cause nobody can, it's your man, roll with it. 'Cause you are the number one, girl, wave your hand, where them see the wedding band, yo. Sexy ladies, wanna party with us? In all the car with us, them not war with us. In all the club, them wanna flex with us. They get next to us, them not vex with us. From the day my bond try ignite my flame. Girl, I call my name, and it is my fame. It's all good, girl, turn me on, till I hear them on. Let's get it on, let's get it on, till I hear them on, girl. It's all good, just turn me on. I won't get busy. Just share that mood, it non stop. When the beat drop, just keep swinging it, get jiggy. Get crunked up, percolate, anything you want, we call it oscillity. I don't take pity. I want to see you get live when the rhythm is a ride. I'm a lyric, I'm a body like electricity. Girl, no, all the girls tell you nothing, 'cause you don't know your destiny. Yo, sexy ladies, wanna party with us? In all the car with us, them not war with us. In all the club, them wanna flex with us. They get next to us, them not vex with us. From the day my bond try ignite my flame. Girl, I call my name, and it is my fame. It's all good, girl, turn me on, till I hear them on. Let's get it on, on. Thanks for the love. Twenty K plus, let's go, let's go, let's go. Masania Shaurath. Ni mesema tu kifika twenty K na pigama shoutouts, ndio? Ay, twenty. Dan K Town, na tu ko Jing. Waguan. Queen, welcome to the party. Husna, I see you. Guru Voke, welcome. Shaggy should be next. Ruto, weewe. Weewe, Ruto. Di Culture, welcome to the party. Aldo Waguan. Say, say, say. Tasa tu fikisha thirty K, sawa. Tap, 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 let's go.
Nadei nikudigi, uskiye fiti. Nadei kukupinma, ze uskiye vivi. Nadei nikuchiu, nikubloka. Big Dina day to relax, to kidishi. Minji nadei nikudigi, uskiye fiti. Nadei kukupinma, ze uskiye vivi. Nadei nikuchiu, nikubloka. Big Dina day to relax.
Play K music, let's go. Nikudigi two fifty. Dancehall Monday, let's go. Welcome to the party, let's go. Kenyan music, let's go. TikTok, let's go. Sing, sing, say. Tu di bambe pa moja. TikTok, I see you Waguan, let's go. Nataka ni wapatie another remix, just one more. The last remix, sawa. The last one, I swear on that rhythm. Welcome to Shashaman International Studios. Let's go. The beat is called Love Is Wicked Rhythm. This is the last remix, eh? The last remix on this one. Watia, juu ni wambia nini? Remix, let's go. Dan Chungo si meza jabba. Nakutumia number WhatsApp. Mi follow upo. Follow, follow, follow. Fusion the Entertainer. Fusion the Entertainer.
We no fight with nobody. But we respect everybody. And we better than everybody. So me we run with anybody. No boy no better than we. No boy no better than we. They fan me call and say. Them no father, son, fan say. And a baga long talking.
Naniya konaya washen? Kamu konaya washen sahi? Where the money there?
Tell me where the money there.
Fire emojis, let's go.
Show me where the money there.
Where the fire emojis? Route to thirty K, let's go. Melvo, thanks for the love, Melvo, thanks for the love. Dancehall Monday, let's go. Young man, you too gale, gale. Kingpin, welcome to the party. Official Hillman. Mikey Draxler. Mikey, thank you for the rose. Random guy, welcome to the party. Route to thirty K, let's go. The road to thirty Gs, let's go. One, two, three, let's go. Ya man. Roots Makaveli Waguan Rasta. Roots Makaveli nakuche ki. Eighteen and over, ay. Makaveli. Miaka thirty five, Danny. You must get your what?
Me tell my man say, member.
The leather hard, the sweat soft Dude brush, get out the dust fast Everybody have a hat, so me get me class Everybody have a hat, so me get me class
Me tell my man say Remember our hygiene and don't forget Bag a sweet cars, give you a cheesy food
Mudumbe, welcome to the party! Road to 30K, let's go!
Where you get a new class, the daddy? Which color that? Addie no party? Are you alone of the style, the daddy? The queen for England and love our yardie? Where you get a new class, the daddy? Which color that? Addie no party? Are you alone of the style, the daddy? The queen for England and love our
Lazy body, no wanna lazy body Lazy body, no wanna lazy body Lazy body, no wanna lazy body
Nicole Whitney, welcome to the party! Waguun! It's Sua, welcome to the party! Gal, you're good! Gal, you're good, gal, you're good, gal, you're good!
Balance on the same thing, just like you should You them firm, you're as here, holy good Look good in a close, are you far, you're good Too so clean, no good, good And when you walk in, everything good Holy paman a try, look, you make sure them cash good Because you have a can left for your good, good Get your gal, them a right, on the same thing, good You with you, take gal, them bright, them brains good Up town, gal love the neighborhood And me a them neighbor treat, the neighbor good My big gal, balance on the good More portland, water gal, gal good Negro girl, good, West Malan gal, good Lucy gal, good, Chilla ni gal, good Saint Anne, Ochi, Saint Thomas gal, good Falmatola, back gal, the fill gal, good Saint Elizabeth, Saint Mary gal, good All of them gal, you love wine bar Stony Hill, on the stone gal, good Polly Royal, a lucky to the earth gal, good Black no mask, in city gal, them good She can see them up here, them gal, they stay good The gal them run a block, boy, them good Popping gal, good, a August down, good Cat burn, ten gal, me know them good Waterhouse gal, good, the skin clean, stay good She reveal the Victoria secret, good Every gal in a the massage parlor, them good And when me a talk about the gal, them good Compliment them gal, not a them look damn good Gal, you're good, gal, you're good, gal, you're good England gal, them me know them good
Mushishaw
Japanese gal, good Chinese and Europe gal, them good Canadian, American gal, good Caribbean, not the best, African gal, good Tight, tight, good Gum that, good Glow that, good The grip that, good Your queen that, good Your bubble that, good Your bumps man that, good And you know, rest it, good Busy signal, I tell the gal, them good All of the gal, them me know them good Come from near and far, gal, good Tell them in a bus, a win a car, them good I said, who is gal? The president, yeah Gal, you're good, and a good, and a good Gal, you're good, and a good, and a good Gal, you're good, and a good, and a good Gal, you're good, and a good, and a good Gal, you're good, and a good, and a good
Waguun! Thank you for the love, thank you for the love! Melvo Chelsa Chek Monday Road to 30K, Mase We are very, very, very close We are very close to 30,000 Share the live, share the live! Share the live, share the live! Welcome to Shashamani International Studios I go by the name DJ Fusion the Ones and Twos I go by the name DJ Fusion the Ones and Twos Deka Deka in the building Vini, welcome to the party! Road to 30K, let's go! So guys Which song do you feel like is the biggest song right now in dancehall? Drop the comment on the comment section Which dancehall song do you feel is the fire song right now in the 254? Or Waloid? You guys choose! John T. Waguun! John T. Meb Regina Mira Champion Mr. Vision We are headed there, we are headed there Leo, Nidancehall Monday Kungirani Sunday So the next song is The next song is the most requested song right now on this chart On this live chart I think this is the most Yeah! Calavania, Calaviana, I see you! Colonier Zwaguun Ayah, this is the most requested song right now on this chart, eh? Listen! Vincent Manchester, Karibu, Mase! Manchester Si Kuzombo Si tuliso ya Anyway, back to the music Fusion the Entertainer, Deka Deka in the building Follow me Fusion the Entertainer Let's go! Let's go, let's go, let's go! Flower lady, hi! Hi flower lady! Hello, welcome to the party!
She said, one inch of body, you know body that She said, two inch of body, you know body that Big man in a yummy girl, know how to go Girl, sit down, sit down, sit down
Good boom boom gal, take a sip on the tip of the top of the cock Make you wet, not the tip of the top of the cock Back way, where your ass a cock up your back Say she want it harder, me no fi stop Little pink pussy, cocky, blacker than a harawak Me make it sit in a can, no nah, I'm a knock She say me dark and slim, but me talawa Where you want, galawa? She want the long body, la la la, le 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 She want the long body, la la la, le 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 You can't stand, de de, la la la, le 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 She want the long body, la la la, le 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 Open a the bell, le 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 le, la la la, le 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 She want the long body, la la la, le 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 You can't stand, de de, la la la, le 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 She want the long body, la la la, le 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 Boom, pan, Jesus!
If you know the dance If you know not the dance Let's go, let's go! See the one time, say!
Take your time with the body doll, in a ten or six Thirty, make a your back it on, man Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Everybody good, I mean, I'll fi catch ya Everybody good, I'ma sign, me love ya Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Sit down, sit down, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey
Back it up, me trip, my a tar Sexy, me love that, quick for me slap Wind up your hip, like rhythm for me slap Pretty body, ma me pose, double six, I'm in a Filling up your bubble, bubble, quick for me now Squeeze up me body muscle, great for me now Your body pretty like a Hispanic Do this for me now, go, go, twist, pan it on
Take your time with the body doll, in a ten or six Thirty, make a your back it on, man Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Everybody good, I mean, I'll fi catch ya Everybody good, I'ma sign, me love ya Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Sit down, sit down, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey
You body not a light, long a model, gal, sit down When the jockey, the inner, the saddle, gal, sit down Sit out like, sang a little gravel Although you're pretty, you no time for your mother So sit down Dash down, you wear upon the chair If you trap, upon the ground, skins, crap, you no care Sit down All when the ride get tough Bad gal, me want ya, me like them rough
Take your time with the body doll, in a ten or six Thirty, make a your back it on, man Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey Everybody good, I mean, I'll fi catch ya Everybody good, I'ma sign, me love ya Sit down with the, sit down with the, sit down with the jockey
Waguun!
The streets attack In a the road, from here to dark Out your tongue like stone, you soft And no joke, no funny, we not laugh Me fit, in a go ball, said I be me hungry Tear round the road, from town to country Every youth, say your money, we a go far Twenty on me back, so me mother can't suffer We say, we a hustle, we a hustle, we a hustle
What you say, say? I go by the name DJ Fusion the Ones and Twos Welcome to the party!
The streets attack In a the road, from here to dark Out your tongue like stone, you soft And no joke, no funny, we not laugh Me fit, in a go ball, said I be me hungry Tear round the road, from town to country Every youth, say your money, we a go far Twenty on me back, so me mother can't suffer We say, we a hustle, we a hustle, we a hustle Hear that? We a hustle, we a hustle, we a hustle Follow We a hustle Riverland We a hustle Jerusalem We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Follow We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle One more! We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Nishtha We a hustle Jump We a hustle Jump car We a hustle Jump boy We a hustle The street, I say Cigarette, phone card Only now come look for you in a your yard Go down a town, go look too fat On the block, you go drop a cow sharp Every youth have a cold and a plan Better than, than for a bigger man Try a thing If you don't win, I still hustle We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Hit the gym We a hustle 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 Nishtha We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Come on, turn We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Ready, let's go We a hustle We a hustle Abad We a hustle Tenville We a hustle Rock, roll, zombie Rise, turn it Come in late Sexy queen size, made a beg for a date Me a do road Over the papa, talis of the load Fuck fi buy, school fi defeat Me meditation, never ever straight Work before me bowl and grace So all is a presentation, me no play We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Hear that? We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Follow We a hustle Riverland We a hustle Jerusalem We a hustle We a hustle Follow We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle One more! We a hustle We a hustle We a hustle Nishtha We a hustle Jump We a hustle Jump car We a hustle Jump boy
Check, check! Thank you for the love, guys! We had a fire show tonight! I go by the name DJ Fusion the Ones and Twos Deka Deka in the building Now, to Kondanya Shashamani International Studios Dancehall Monday A major shoutout to everybody that was live We had a blast! Show me Bam Bam Baya! As a sign out Walewa USA, I see you! Big up on yourself! Let me send a few requests, eh? A few shoutouts Natasha Michelle Bela Nakucheki Mzeh Malison Dadiyo Cornelius, thank you for the love! As a sign out, I go by the name Fusion the Entertainer, Msisa How Follow me, Palen Guys, we're almost 30K, let's go to 30K! There's another DJ coming up So stick on! Badu to go on! You guys have a good time! I hope you had a good time, you guys, eh? Zen Period Solution, Waguun! Triple tap on the screen, my guys! I wanna big up our producer, eh? Mister Ebon Sami Big up Charlie Rankin Niku Finish Kumalo Dan K Town Madonna, welcome to the party! There's another DJ coming in, eh? So Msiyogobe We still live! Road 2 I think by the night, by the time the night ends We should be at like 50K or something? Welcome to the party! The DJ on the deck is not another Dan! Fusion the Entertainer! Now, to Kondanya Shashamani International Studios Ni wa pigye karimiks kamoja kamuusho Manaydisha karimiks Sawa karimiks kamoja kamuusho Eh, Dan, it's okay, eh? Each and every Monday, I'm here for you guys, eh? Welcome to the party!
DJ Serke.
Walewa itisha, biniman ya muisho. One, two, three, let's go.
When me stepping on the club, select a trou down. Gal a climb pon box and gal a crawl pon ground. Gal lock up in a cage of a pole, a swing round. Me see a three color hair, right? It was a clown. When the gal start wind, the whole place a tear down. Gal a drug hang go down. A bump a touchdown, in the Beyonce wine, and I move it around. Every man head a spin like a merry-go-round. When me tell the selector, fi turn up his sound. I must and compound, and no ifra stab on. My gunpoint, me a fit in the hot gal a ho. I fi have three color hair inna me zone, pick up. Cock it, cock it, cock it up, gal. Back it, back it, back it up, gal. Fling it, fling it, fling it up, gal. Gimme the, gimme the, gimme the, gimme. Let's go. Cock it, cock it, cock it up, gal. Fling it, fling it, fling it up, gal. Gimme the, gimme the, gimme the, gimme. When she stepping on the club, the world dance through path. Told a gal a sexy, me a fit cause too class. And no matter how the lot, damn, way too sharp. If a breast a ass, well a sheet a titcha. When she do the dirty wine, and the arms a star. When she move out, races like a work of art. Infectious and deadly, just like Pfizer art. And brooch a re cash, and before you get gone. You no straight, you re not understand this part. You know, deep it up south, a strictly up north. See me weed and me can, I'm very close to me heart. I am a holder, guess what, me still work smart. Who's got first, then sex second, inna me tar. Who da drive a Mercedes, I rock this danky gal. Woman, you say? You must give a come sharp. I'm try writing on the man in step, oh, 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 oh.